Okay, we're here a little bit later than usual, but we'll get going here. This is the planning board meeting for Tuesday, March five. So this evening, we have three regular members here. And Dick Brownell is here remotely, and then Jen Zeig was here also. So they're gonna be the designated planning board members for the evening on your hearing. So our first matter is a continued public hearing, Panetti to Main Street, Kisco Park. But the applicant has withdrawn and asked us to adjourn the public hearing. They have not finished their submission. So what we've planned to do is to reschedule the public hearing continuance till April sixteenth, was it Felicia?
Yes.
April sixteenth, the second meeting in April. So we'll notice it for that continuation. And if we receive everything from the applicants, we'll hear the application at that point. Our next item is the informal appearance before us, and this is the COLEF, the eighth Cynthia Court. Application for a site developer plan approval for the construction of an in-ground pool and patio with water controls and relocation of the existing septic tank. Sorry for the delay, but you're welcome.
No worries. Thank you. Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Andy Chung. I am the engineer for the applicant. Um Mary Ann and Gary are here also. They're the contractors who will be installing this plant. I brought a board, um I think we're gonna put it on the on the screen also for everyone to see.
Yeah. I know.
But the basically the board is the plan that was submitted on this last submittal. I just wanted to present the project. I haven't presented the project in front of you before.
Right.
Um so as you know, the design engineer, I wanted to kind of go over some of these things that um hard to decipher on paper.
We can try this, so that your on this go dead.
Um. I've been working out.
Show off.
Excellent, thank you.
Alright, no instructions, I'm glad I figured this out.
Um so there's been a couple of iterations to the original project. Uh you know, when we first tackled this project, we we didn't really understand, you know, the purpose of the original approved clearing and grading line, the previously approved clearing and and grading limits. Um so now, uh I think we have a better understanding and I think we have a better placement of the pool and patio that follows as much of the zoning as possible. So the location of the pool and the patio around the pool is outside of the stormwater setback, which is this dash line right here. It is outside of the originally approved clearing and grading limit, which is this line right here. Uh but it is not outside of the previously approved clearing and grading limit from November fifth, twenty seventeen. Um and I think, and I wasn't here for a previous planning board meeting, but I I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, that that was okay. Um as long as we were out uh inside of the originally approved clearing and grading limit uh from the July seventh, two thousand nine planning board approval. So I managed to fit the pool and the patio inside of that line. So that said, the stormwater design for this, to take the flow from the impervious surface of the patio, the pool, and the additional hot tub that we were gonna be putting behind the house, uh the original intent was to the 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 original in intent was to just take that flow and put them into infiltration chambers. That is always the go-to, is the easiest approach. So um I had gone out there with Gary and Terry from the town and we had excavated a couple of deep test pits. And we found that the uh we hit rock at three and a half feet. Um so as you recall, I think a lot of the construction of these houses in this subdivision, there was a lot of rock that had to be
Yep.
uh hammered out, et cetera. Um so because we couldn't do the infiltration chambers, what I ended up doing was doing a bio-retention basin. Now this bio-retention basin, there's really two types of bio-retention basins. There's a full infiltration and there's a partial infiltration. Because we hit rock at three and a half feet, we couldn't do a full infiltration bio-retention basin. So what we did was we did a partial infiltration where there's two and a half feet of a planting media, which is typically a mixture of concrete, sand, and topsoil to provide the infiltration. And also a six-inch under-drain pipe underneath above the the rock, whereas the water slowly percolated through that planting media, it would go into the under-drain and then out. So that that accommodates the stormwater attenuation and the volume attenuation as as well as the water quality. Um so that's what I've designed for this for this site. The size of the bio-retention basin, bottom area is three hundred and sixty-four square feet. Um we will require three eighteen square feet based on calculations from the New York State Stormwater Design Manual. I had submitted a full SWIP report. Um I I received comments back. Uh a lot of it is really just kind of, you know, crossing my Ts and dotting Is kind of thing. Um some fixing of of numbers. Um but the HydroCAD model, uh and my design of the bio-retention basin shows that it's I can attenuate um various storms from the impervious area, from the patio and the pool, uh the hot tub. And I think there was an additional impervious area that wasn't previously accounted for. Came up with a one thousand six hundred and twenty-five square feet total of impervious area that this bio-retention basin was going was going to treat.
Would those retention, the retention area also be used um at the end of the season for drawdown of both the pool and the hot tub?
Yeah, so so we had modeled the pool with the patio together. So the pool is in itself uh a a impervious surfaces as well. Um so one of the comments was was to show that the the drawdown would be accommodated also. So I'm gonna include that that analysis in the HydroCAD model.
Okay.
With that. Uh but yes, it 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 will it will take the the six-inch drawdown um of the pool. Uh in addition, as part of this project, uh just back up a little bit. So now with the previously approved clearing and grading limit, the originally approved clearing and grading limit, this dark line here is our new um limit of of disturbance. That's that's everything that's in here, including the temporary stabilized construction entrance, uh the moving of the septic tank. So this dark line right here is where we're gonna be doing the construction. Um in addition to that, in addition to the patio and the pool and the bio-retention and hot tub, we have to move the septic tank because of the location of the pool and the requirements of the the border health requirements to be a certain distance away. Uh that is actually pretty simple, 'cause the tank is literally right there. We're just moving it here. The the affluent line just has to be replumbed into a new location. All of the leach fields coming from that location doesn't have to be moved. We're just basically moving that four-inch pipe outflow from that existing tank. We're moving it over thirty feet and connecting it to the new tank.
And and your fields are
Yeah, the existing.
Or downhill, right?
Yeah, all of the fields are all down here.
Did you build out the expansion area? Is that built out or is it still just reserved in the event that you have to build it out?
The well, the existing septic, the existing reserve area, that that all remains the same.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're we're not there. We're not touching, we're not touching.
No change in capacity or anything else?
No, there's no extra bedrooms, there's no
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm trying to catch you off.
No, no, that's okay. I have the same question as whether you're moving any of the so the those field lines are all way down below.
Yeah, they're all they're all at the bottom of those of the hill.
So you're just sort of building a new one, disconnecting from this and connecting.
And connecting to the new tank, I think, yes.
Got it.
Yeah, so that satisfies the border health requirements of the distance from the septic tank to the pool.
May I go back to your um the drawdown, the end of this? Lisa, you haven't accommodated for that, right?
No, the 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 model does does accommodate. I I didn't present that information
Okay.
in in with the HydroCAD model.
Yeah, just based on the size of the pool, and I'm just assuming it's at least four feet deep. That's a fair amount of volume of water.
Well, the it's we're 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 not gonna be able to accommodate the entire drawdown
I see.
of the pool, but it would be enough to draw down the six inches.
Got it, got it.
Uh.
Do you have uh do you have plans on the pool itself? Uh normally, we look at this and and hopefully the downslope area of the pool, that's gonna be the deep end, to minimize excavation, the shallow end of the pool, shallower or deeper of the house.
Is it? I
I don't know if we have those details.
I I'm I'm not the pool designer. I think this was gonna be gonna be subcontracted out to a pool builder.
Right.
Um so at 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 some point, uh we will have a plan as far as the pool.
Right, so we would need to see that again, just to mitigate the the excavation.
But yeah, yeah.
Is there a different heights or is it gonna be a flat?
Uh it's I don't know. What?
It's gonna have a a shallower end and then a deeper end to it.
Right.
Probably not hugely different, just because of the shape and size of it, but it will have some delineation from a shallow end to a deeper end.
Right. Right.
And and just
Did I have her name? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes, this is Mary Ann Rivera.
Okay, good, okay, sorry.
Do you want to step up when you talk?
Just for the record.
For the record, okay.
And and just for frame of reference, uh the 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 length, the length of the pool and the length of the bio-retention basin are all pretty much at the same elevation. So the bio-retention is at about elevation four sixteen. Um so we're basically gonna, so why am I keeping the six-sixteen point eight? I'm a little short is better.
Well, Sabrina's got it up on the board too.
Oh, uh if you go on to sheet two, on on the next sheet, there's more of a blow-up of this area as opposed to seeing the entire.
The uh you have a a ramp here that goes down right here, you know, parallel to the uh it goes to the the house.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
That's about.
So uh
Yeah, so that it it was it was to minimize the amount of of cut, you know, of cut and fill that that
Right. So no steps, do we use a ramp instead?
Yeah, it's a it's a it's a gradual gradual ramp going going down. It's it's
And so it's ADA compliant, et cetera?
Uh
It's eight feet to drop.
Right, yeah, it's a there's an eight-foot elevation difference um to get from the steps of the house down to the patio of of the pool.
Okay, you you got to give confirmation that I think that it meets ADA compliance, right?
Um.
Is it, do you have any?
Uh I I have not checked it. Did it was ADA compliant or not? But
I would imagine that would have to be the
Um
Even if it, I don't know what the ADA is it, but if you're dropping eight feet
It's pretty short.
Yeah, that's you, that's too short, short.
It's good speed for a cannonball into the water.
Four four eighteen, four nineteen, six.
Yeah, that's six. Right, that's eight feet.
We we what what we wanted to do is we wanted to use the pool, have the elevation, the top elevation of the pool to be as close to existing grade as possible.
No, I we get that. I think the question is like how steep is this, right? And whether that meets code. Getting from from your back of porch or top patio
Mm-hmm.
to the pool patio level. I mean, if I just, it's it seems like it's, I mean, it's the core, right, the ratio. If, I mean, without really having a
Uh I can I can I can check that. I can throw it, I can throw a small barrel on on there just to
Right, yeah, so I, yeah, I think that's that's what we're
I understand that, so I need I need
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just basing it on how wide it is versus how long it is.
Mm-hmm.
And it feels like it's gonna be steeper than you need it to be.
I'll 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 throw I'll throw a small barrel on there just just to yeah, I'm sure what what the question is. So I guess what we're looking for, I um you know, I guess is really just, do we have a do we have a feasible project or or are we you know, I don't I don't uh I I think both Gary, Mary Ann, and I, I think uh we've 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 gone through um I think about about a year and a year and a half of of the since the original submittal. And you know, I think we we wanna, I guess we wanna kind of gauge the, should I keep working on this or is this gonna be, you know, no, you can't get a pool on here?
And sorry to interrupt, but this is um tomorrow COLEF made Cynthia. And we have changed the plans and tried to accommodate really as much as possible. And it's very disheartening, because I feel like we have um, you know, we've been dealing with this for uh of a good almost two and a half years now, just going back and forth with the plans and doing as much as possible. And when he, actually before we moved the house, that I approached the board and asked him what the probability of us getting a pool. And they said absolutely, if you stay within these gradients, you should have no problem. I said, this is really important to me and my family. And before I buy this house, I wanna know that if we follow everything that you guys have said, then that should be not a problem, and I was assured so. So obviously, I trusted that, not knowing I should, that I shouldn't. And Mary Ann and everybody has been working so hard on making this pool happen. And I just don't know what other oops we need to jump through. And how much more hope I need to let go there?
Well, I I can tell you that uh we we I think we're pretty well set with the presentation. What we'll next hear is from our staff, and they have comments in terms of uh various items that need to be done. I think you'll see that most of these are um administrative types of things. Um some of the things that you'll hear from the town engineer, uh there are some issues that have got to be resolved. But are they insurmountable? I I suspect that they're not, uh that they are surmountable, that a pool uh could eventually work here, hopefully for this season for you. So um why don't we do that? Why don't we run through those comments? Um and and I think that'll give everyone a flavor of what we're looking at and what the issues are. And and hopefully, you guys have a takeaway that uh that makes sense. So Sabrina, why don't you start with your comments? You had some issues and comments?
Sure, I don't have a lot of comments. Um basically, there's two areas that need to be refined. This needs, these areas are really just for documentation, so we can issue proper approvals. And the planning board has the information that they need to determine whether or not you're in compliance with zoning. The first uh relates to my third comment regarding coverage calculations. So each one of these properties has a common driveway in this subdivision. There's a common driveway, and that common driveway contributes to your development and performance. Um it is very important for us to identify all of the development in our lot for total development coverage, and for you to demonstrate to us how that amount is calculated. Um I can tell you, based on your mapping, I do not believe that the common driveway is included in your calculations. So typically, what we ask for is a map and a breakdown. Um the town engineer will will assist you, uh provide you some information related to a lot in your subdivision that recently came in for changes. And that will assist you as an example of how to calculate that coverage. Um the coverage needs to be demonstrated on a plan as well as in the calculations worksheet. So I cannot, with the information I have, verify that the information you have provided is true. The planning board needs to know that that information is correct or where it falls within the zoning required development coverage. If you are over that coverage, they have the ability to grant you that overage. They just need the information to understand where you sit and what that process will mean. My second comment relates to that clearing and grading limit line. And I know you said that you have planned on going back to the two thousand and nine clearing and grading limit line. Unfortunately, that line was abolished by the planning board. However, we are recognizing that line as a as a line of definition, because the newer line provides less of an area for you to do disturbance. What we need to understand is the amount of disturbance that is occurring beyond your approved clearing and grading limit line, and examining the two thousand and nine clearing and grading limit line as kind of your outer limit. But we need to understand the total amount within that clearing and grading area that you are disturbing and changing from what is approved today. And those are really my two comments.
May I just interject and ask one question? Why, I I I completely understand that we have to follow all of this, but why every single time is something new? Like, why is this not something that we can just address once and for all with one meeting or one adjustment of the of the plans?
These comments, and these comments have been in every review memo that I have issued on this project. This is nothing new.
And in fact, Sabrina's notes will indicate where she's had prior comments and where they've been addressed. So we know that those have been satisfied, those are done, and and we're set with those. So we do carefully monitor those and check those. And again, none of these are earth-shattering and and should thwart the the success of the application. But it's it's documentation, we we are obligated to follow the rules and regulations that the town board has set. And again, with regard to coverage, we have the ability to even approve some of this to a to a certain extent. We just need to know what the delta is, and we have it memorialized on on the plans. Again, not to, it's 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 not any special fun for us or or staff. It's it's just what we have to do so that we comply with the the legislation.
Can I can I can I ask a question?
Understand.
Sure, absolutely, sure, sure.
Clarify. So the previously approved clearing and grading limit line, that was from the November fifth, twenty seventeen planning board approval. So that line, we 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 would not be able to get our project inside of that line, because that's literally the footprint of the house. So what we're working with is the originally approved clearing and grading limit line from the July seventh, two thousand nine planning board approval. So that line is what we're using for me to come up with how much disturbance is occurring inside that limit line. Is that what you're looking for, Sabrina?
Yes, the board needs to understand the amount of disturbance within that line, because as it stands right now, the approved clearing and grading limit line sets a limit that you cannot go beyond. You are proposing your project beyond the approved clearing and grading limit line in several areas. Not in the entirety of the areas of that area, but a portion of that area. So in essence, you are redrawing that line. We need to understand how much disturbance is occurring, because oftentimes, the planning board requires mitigation for changing that line and disturbing, you know, what has been the limitation.
Understood. Now, I I do wanna say that my bio-retention basin is outside of that line. And I think uh there was a previous planning board meeting where I think that was okay. Um 'cause honestly, that's really, I you I can fit the pool and the patio inside that approved clearing and grading limit line, but I can't get the pool and the patio and a stormwater system inside of that line.
I I understand. I think we understand that. And we, you know, we're not trying to set up something that is impossible for you. But again, to Sabrina's point, we just need to know what that delta is, what the information is uh for the change.
Yeah, I I will I will submit a separate plan that shows the coverage calculations. Uh another question, so Cynthia Court is a common driveway, so that
Right.
that is included as part of the
Right.
part of the the
Right.
So
And again, Bob Seale can provide you with some information for from another application from a contiguous continuous uh property to show you how that was done. Um and probably give you a heads up on 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 that.
Okay, cuz Right, 'cause I I I would need to know where it starts and where it ends.
Exactly, exactly.
Right. And his, in the schematic, he will provide you, will demonstrate that for another property, so you can apply that methodology to this property.
Perfect, thank you.
Again, trying to expedite it for you so that, you know, again, we're not throwing up walls for you, but you know, trying to help us get to the the finish line here.
Do you do you think we can give some ideas of what the mitigation would be? Because we know it is not gonna meet and the delta is gonna be larger, so like
Well Uh what we've done, that's a good point, um and trying to anticipate the next conversation.
Right, right.
So I I can tell you that on a neighboring property, um we have pictures up here about this. But what we did on that, I'm gonna make sure I don't shine in people's eyes. Um what we did on that was uh we decided that down here in this area, that there would be some mitigation in terms of returning that area back into undisturbed area in exchange for the 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 delta of the increase in clearing and grading limit line and and increase the disturbance and coverage. So that's what we did last time, and and if you wanna think in terms of that, um I think it was fairly painless uh to the other applicant, fairly innocuous. And yet it helped us over that hurdle to um to justify in our minds that if there was mitigation here, good faith mitigation on the part of the applicant, to offset what is unavoidable for the the preferred project. So uh that's something that jumps out uh that we looked at previously. I don't know if we had anything else uh that we, do you remember, Elbet, was there anything else that we looked at uh on the other application? Or Dick, do you recall?
Uh sure.
It was Dennis.
I'm gonna take the year with Dennis has.
Yep.
Yeah, I can I I can understand that way. I sometimes I I'll do work on properties where there's wetlands, so we would replace some of those wetland plantings.
Yeah. Yes. Exactly.
So yeah, I'm afraid
Make some plantings, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
Um and the other uh application was a little bit more complicated. It was a path and a roadway and all that kind of stuff on the property.
No, just uh so I I I did propose some plantings in the bio-retention basin, would that would that
I don't think so.
Help?
No, 'cause that's that's really part of the mitigation on the 'Cause Dennis, do you wanna take take over in your
Right, you know Yeah, I mean, I I tried to provide that in the memo, like generically speaking, stormwater is not considered mitigation or replacement, just as if you wanted to flip that model. Uh as the Corps of Engineers and DEC says, don't use our wetlands for stormwater treatment. They're they're really thought of as two different entities, so
Right.
But um that other application, obviously, uh that chairman's speaking of, you know, it's been posted and I could guide you to that. And you know, they did, uh as they were saying, there were there were plantings, there were opportunities to remove invasive species from this understory area. There was um deposition of a lot of debris on the drains drainage vent in the back that needed to be removed. And there was planting opportunity there. So you know, there there's always something, you know, 'cause planet Earth is our beauty and dumping ground all at the same time. So there's always a, you know, we could find a balance somewhere where where something could work out. But it wouldn't be the pollution controls per se. They wouldn't, they have another function. Um so from the um hands slap administrative perspective, so my first comment had to do with uh going back to even before the current owner purchased the property, there were obviously trees that were damaged during construction that we tried to capture uh at that time. So that if, you know, understandably, if those trees didn't wanna be looked at, were gonna decline in health. Um and the current owner wanted to remove them, we at least wanted to document that, right, that these trees didn't, you know, necessarily decline in natural uh deaths. So what ended up happening here is this submission at least accounted for what removals occurred. And I know from speaking with Mary Ann, 'cause she had done the work on the property, that they did do a lot of additional plantings. So from my calculations, uh they replaced um more trees uh than were required for the removals that occurred. So if we wanted to sort of put this in a separate column, not part of this project, uh it doesn't, in my mind, administratively close those removals and those plantings, which obviously occurred a few years ago. So I just wanted to document it, 'cause obviously we made Mr. Nick Chris and Kelly Sessions go through the tree damage assessment report specifically for this reason, knowing that I knew this was gonna happen in the future. Um now getting to this project, uh they're proposing to remove uh another tree. Um so you know, there is really no planting banking credit. So that uh if it's a ten-inch diameter maple, you're looking at, you know, the replacement of an additional tree. So that would be a planting as far as the 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 tree plan is concerned or treatment for contribution, that's something that the applicant can propose with their uh, you know, desire is at the uh at a subsequent meeting. As far as the uh, so the plan that I I I was looking at um in terms of the basin, so obviously, I understand this is the first time you're presenting it. And some of the items that I mentioned here, you know, potentially could be conditioned as part of a resolution. But we would certainly have to have to see them as far as the details of the uh of the planting plan as as things that I listed here, you know, sizes of plants, you know, what spacing would be, you know, items, items like that. And also too, I would just want verification. Um I'm just a little confused as to, just verifying which zones would anticipate to be vegetated, which wouldn't be uh vegetated. Um so those were basically the uh the polluted comments. As far as the species that were selected, the next paragraph was just talking about, you know, I I understand with this looking at you know, I I understand with this, looking at the space and um looking at the symbols for what the plants stand for, um, I just wanted to call out, like, for example, so the three plants that that you would pick, um, they all don't necessarily, at least in our experience, moving their weapons grow side by side with all the same uh, you know, hydrologic regimes. But again, some of these can be, um, as I said, uh, field calls, you know, spot locations, and that's fine. I just, these are comments though that I just wanted to, you know, just make at this time just to say that, you know, it's not like this unilateral, yeah, once you have, you know, this basin or you have certain elevations in the basement, these plants would do well in all all spots. Maybe yes, maybe no, it depends on what you uh what you select. Um, and I was just curious, uh, you know, the last paragraph just kinda talked about, and again, this kinda ties back to the plants, that's why I'm bringing it up. Um, what what is the anticipated uh inundation periods, if any, uh, you know, time period depth? You know, uh, and would would it be like, you know, like this type of uniform cover at the bottom? Would it just be spot puddles? Would it really be, you know, only after rain events in a certain period? 'Cause again, that would, you know, just dictate what I think would work and would not work with respect to uh to the to the plants. So those were just my uh comments and design.
So this uh the 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 bio retention basin was uh designed for a two day uh water storage um period. So uh it 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 should be uniform uh flow 'cause there's gonna be a layer of mulch on top of the sand and topsoil mixture. So as the water comes in from the pretreatment device going into the bio retention basin, uh, it will be uniform, uh, spread out over that three hundred and sixty four square feet bottom area. And then over the course of two days, uh, the percolation into the underdrain pipe, which is two and a half feet below the top of the basin. And then whatever gets down to the underdrain pipe will come out of the un- come out of the underdrain pipe into a vegetated filter area.
Okay, so so after, you know, now let's say uh a a rain event, um, as long as, you know, I I I don't wanna pick numbers, like half inch rain, whatever it may be, it it is anticipated that obviously you could have have some ponding, but you know, what you're describing almost to me is like, you know, the infield after the rain delay, right? It's like there's this, you know, almost active process to to pull water out. So, okay, so I I I'm just asking because, you know, I just wonder, you know, some of the the obligated species, I just wonder how well they may or may not do if, you know, you're you're really, you're not really gonna have like these like super saturated extended period conditions. So, you know, again, that these are things, and that's why I also recommended in addition to plugs, you know, some of those seed mixes which have like a variability of species in their design, you know, I, there's like some basin bottom mixes that I think should be applied uh as well because, you know, I think that would help um over time.
Right, and a lot of the native species I I I got from the the New York State Stormwater Design Manual for the recommendations for bio retention basins.
Okay. I'm happy they picked native species, 'cause for their for some of their rooftop plantings, they picked like, you know, not meters, so I still thought that was wrong. Thank you. Those are my comments, thank you.
Bob, you had some comments?
Uh, yes, good evening to the chairman and members of the board, uh, thank you. Um, as Mr. checks in, a lot a lot of the technical items which um are required to make the report just be more proper in its form, um, but I do have some concerns um with stormwater comments. One of them is T two, the soil testing data issue that I did not see one has to be stamped and signed by a licensed P E. Um, they took a D test, uh, and I don't believe they took any P R test, but based on the D test that show on the plan, they do not have enough dimensions from the bottom of the bio retention system to the bedrock. Um, based on table seven point two and the New York State Design Stormwater Management under the feasibility matrix, it needs three feet. They do not have three feet. So that's my biggest concern right there, that's comment S T three. Um, S T four basically consists of standalone range map, which clarifies the subcation area. And S T five is a rainfall distribution map. I'll go through those real quick. S T six is technical comments on how they set up the hydrocan report. Uh, S T seven is based on what I just said previously for S T three. Uh, the D test, though, it is not in the center of the proposed bio retention basin. Uh, that must be taken there wherever it is, where it's where it's handled by the pre-draining area. And again, the 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 one that they did show does not indicate meeting compliance of the D E C manual. So hopefully, when they do the one in the middle, they'll have three feet. So S T seven or S T eight, nine, ten, they're all technical comments uh to make the report uh just a little bit more sufficient efficient than what it's trying to reach. Um, nineteen S T nineteen, and obviously the property is located in the East Hudson watershed, uh, which is the E P territory, so it's gonna need uh obviously a permit from D E C, an average large erosion, segmentation control. Um, number twenty, S T twenty, in the bio retention system, it's gonna be feasible, if it will be feasible, it is considered as critical stormwater component. So I would recommend that they provide a declaration to make sure that they maintain the integrity of the uh bio retention system throughout the years in perpetuity. Uh, those are my stormwater comments, and for my general comments, um, I didn't, I couldn't tell whether the structural design and computations uh take into account possibly the hydrostatic loading that might be created by the overflow weir and then the bio retention basin and the infiltration itself. So that has to be demonstrated on the structural calculations on S four. And um, since this was one of the applicants that proposed it, I just approved clearing and grading uh to bigger amount than what was once shown. So if that's the case and the plan was inclined to go ahead with it, they should provide a mandatory clearing and grading limit line map and also a declaration as well. Uh, the G C three and the G C four basically notes that we'd like to see on the plan. So uh those are my comments for tonight, just to share.
Okay, did you have some questions or comments on on the town engineers?
Yes, I had I had a couple of questions. So uh I had discussed um in the beginning that this bio retention basin wasn't a full infiltration bio bio retention, knowing that we did hit rock at three and a half feet. So that was the reason why we couldn't do a P R test, uh, because we hit rock at at the three and a half feet. Now
Well, can I can I say, if you're gonna, if it's gonna be just, you have to put a liner in it then so it doesn't infiltrate. so it doesn't infiltrate. And even if that's the case, uh, table seven two still says two feet.
So the, right, so the three foot requirement uh was for the full infiltration. Um, if we used a bedrock as its limiting layer, uh, you could have, we don't, I could there there there's a six inch underdrain pipe, so whatever comes through the soil in the bio retention makes its way into that underdrain pipe. So there there isn't really a requirement to have any amount of soil to your limiting layer. So I don't think the three feet is is really serves a purpose 'cause whatever comes through the bio retention is gonna go into the underdrain pipe, and the underdrain pipe is gonna go out of the basin into a filter area. So having two feet, three feet, no feet of soil from the underdrain down to the bedrock, does it does it serve a purpose?
Well, that's what the table shows, and that's what I go by, so New York State Design Stormwater Manual says two feet. And it has an asterisk by it, and it says, if designed with a permeable lot, which you're speaking of, it must have three feet. So evidently, what they need regardless is a minimum, minimum of two feet, and if it's gonna be used as infiltration, it has to be three feet. So you give one of those on that.
All right, I'll take a look at that. Uh, but as far as the 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 P R test, I'm 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 not gonna be able to do a P R test on existing grades because we hit the rock at three and a half feet.
That's that's understandable.
Yeah, so so the 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 filter media inside the bio retention basin is gonna be, you know, there's gonna be a certain percolation rate, it's basically concrete, so it makes the topsoil at two, two and a half feet depth, so that's what's gonna be the
Yeah, one one one, sorry, one comment I failed to mention on is that there is a, based on the two thousand um twenty two regulations that the county came out with in last April, um, they say that there's actually no stormwater improvements above septic systems. Now, of course, I can't make the interpretations on how they're gonna see this as a stormwater infiltration system, but I would think in this particular case, just to be conservative and safe, I would require you to obtain a no objection uh from the county, which is basically they look at it, they make a determination, if they feel their new rules and regulations doesn't apply to this, uh, they would stamp no objection onto that, so that's something we would require soon as required to the issues of a B D P.
That would help any future people who own the house. That, okay, that was covered, son.
That is correct, we do it to cover all bases.
Oh, it sounds like a little more work. Paperwork, maybe. Except for some testing, right? Uh, did that sum it up?
Yes, they they have to do a D test within the center of the bio retention and uh possibly they might get that two foot, that's needed.
So you're requesting a letter from the Board of Health saying that there's no objection of having
Uh, basically, what we do is when you get the plans pretty much done, uh, there's a stamp we have in the office um that basically requests that from them. You bring us two copies of the plan, uh, we put that stamp on the plan, we give it to you, the applicant. You bring it up to Westchester County up there on the Mount Kisco.
Mount Kisco.
They look at it, they do it, they make a determination. If they have no objection to your design relative to it uh in its proximity of all the septic, they stamp a no objection, and you, they keep one copy, and then you get and then you give one to us.
Okay. And then as far as the retaining wall that uh is below the bio retention basin, uh, I kinda put that in there just to to reduce the amount of earthwork uh just because of the slope of of going down that hill. Uh, putting in a a a retaining wall would prevent, uh, would would not require the grading back down at a three to one still uh to the existing grade. Um, half a dozen together, we can do a retaining wall, we we don't have to do a retaining wall.
Well Well, I just wanna make certain that if there is a big storm event, let's keep in mind that, guys, the pre and post development only picks up differential between the curve numbers pre and post. So it's actually when you do math, it's about a four inch depth of rain. If you get a big storm event, you get four, five, six inches, it's gonna overflow over the burn, go behind the retaining wall, back up. So something has to be looked into to make sure that wall can withstand any additional hydrostatic loading in worst case scenario. Uh, that should be looked into.
Yeah, I'll I'll provide those calculations.
But I think overall, the the notion, the idea of of the retainables is a good one because it uh limits the the impacts. Uh, first of all, you would have much more impact in terms of clearing and grading limit line, and it'd be a different project, different problem.
Yeah, like before I put the wall here, my my grading might be down here.
Sure, sure, yeah. Sure, I I I think it was a very good addition that you put in.
That was in um in the process of addressing the comments now.
Okay. Did, have you, yeah, have you received a copy of the comments?
I have, I have everything.
Okay, great, good, okay. All right, uh, anyone else have any comments, questions? Jeff, anything?
No.
Good for now. Dick, anything else at this point?
I think it has to have another end.
Yep, yep, agreed. Okay, um, I don't know how soon you can get your material to us, but we'll um schedule as soon as soon as you add this stuff to us.
I'll do it Tuesday, next week or so.
Yep, so what are the cutoff dates for, say, April sixteenth?
The next cutoff date is uh March eleventh, oh, April thirteenth. I don't believe we're gonna have a meeting that day.
On April thirtieth? Don't look so disappointed.
I believe the next cutoff date is March twenty fifth for the April sixteenth meeting.
March twenty fifth?
Yes.
So if you can get material in, we're we're happy to schedule you to to get you going. Okay, if it's realistic for you.
You'll get everything revised by March twenty fifth?
Okay, good. Very good, okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Yep, question?
Just to clarify, you'll send us out everything that you need so we can have it to you for the March twenty fifth or just base it upon all the comments that we made today?
Based on the comments.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll 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 have a a response memo uh addressing uh everyone's comments. I'll have a revised set of plans.
Yeah, exactly.
And probably one or two additional plans based on Sabrina's comments.
Yes.
So, yeah, let me just comment, um, do you wanna be out there? I mean, like, that would be helpful, 'cause they do that with your neighbors, uh, if you still want this color. 'Cause 'cause there is no, right, I I, you know, it it helps, like each, you know, what would serve as like a mitigation or restoration, whatever words you wanna use, certainly you need property to property. So, um, I'm happy to guide you, you know, obviously to what the other submission was, but if you wanna see how to apply that potentially to this property, I mean, you guys should just call me and I'll set that up, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll take a look, yes. Yeah, I I I would like to take a look at what was done on other properties, so
Okay.
It could help, it could help.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, one minor thing, you had logs of code on this N O I for the uh stormwater general permit.
Well, okay.
You used, I think, your your home address one instead, Mount Kisco.
Probably.
Not a stumbling block. Okay, good. We'll see you then.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, our next item tonight is the minutes from February sixth, two thousand twenty four. Very brief, does anyone have any questions or comments on the minutes, any adjustments, amendments? If not, is there a motion to adopt the uh minutes of February sixth?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so that's all said, um, and is there a motion to close the the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.